Okay, we are going to call our city council meeting to order for June 3, 2013. You'll please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. We have one proclamation this evening, and if Debbie Trogget would meet me up front?
Oh, man, this is good stuff.
Whereas June 8, 2013 marks the 20th anniversary of the opening of the Stillwater Community Health Center, and whereas the Stillwater Community Health Center's mission is to promote a healthy community by providing compassionate health care to the medically underserved or uninsured in Payne County, and whereas the clinic has provided a monthly average of 714 prescriptions valued at $65,300 and 60 physician visits at no charge to the patients since January of 2013, and whereas the clinic has been able to accomplish this through a team of dedicated volunteer physicians, pharmacists, nurses, nutritionists, and other community residents, provided an average of 126 volunteers' hours per month valued at $4,348, and whereas the benefit of the health center to this community is improving health and wellness to those individuals who have no other affordable health care alternative, and whereas the clinic could not exist without the continued support of the Stillwater United Way, Elite Repeat, Stillwater Medical Center, local churches, and members of this community. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim in Stillwater, Oklahoma, the month of June 2013 as Stillwater Community Health Center Month. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the city commission, and there's been so many of the government leaders over the years that have continued to help make Stillwater Community Health Center possible, both the city and the county government, and it's just part of what the name was intended from the origin, that we would be a community taking care of a community, and as I listen to him read the numbers of how much dollar value of health care, it just seems like a very, very insignificant drop in the bucket for what this program has really done. Millions and millions of dollars that really can't even be equated into a dollar form that has been given because the most precious commodity that we have been able to get is to save a life and to help someone that would otherwise go without any kind of health care or even the basic health care that we all enjoy. So, I just have to say thank you to you all and to all those that have gone before you, and I'm sitting here and I'm so mad at myself, I cannot remember what the mayor was that was the mayor when we started, but she passed away of leukemia. Not Chris, it was Mike Hansen. I can't believe I can't remember, but anyway, Mike and Larry Hansen and so many of the mayors in the past that have made this possible, so I just wanted to...
And Friday is when you're celebrating 20-year anniversary?
Yes, Friday will be the, well, actually Saturday, but we had to do on Friday, would be 20 years from our very first clinic, and I have to say of all the programs that have probably been developed at a local level in Stillwater, and I was a part of a lot of those over the years, this one came together the fastest because this is the most pressing need and everyone recognized it, but I think that one of the most amazing questions people have nowadays is, is our program going to be needed in the future? And I'd say if anybody is looking at the future in a realistic way, it's going to be more necessary than ever before, so we just need for people to continue to support us, and if you can't come out and volunteer, finances go a long way for this program, and recruiting a volunteer, twisting the doctor's arms, which you don't have to twist some of them very much, but anyway, it's an important program and the future of it is really important to the health of this entire community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes us down to our consent docket, we have items A and B on the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
I move approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion and second on the consent docket. And that passes five to zero. We do not have any requests to speak for non-public hearing items, so it'll take us down to the public hearing. And our first public hearing is to receive input regarding the proposed fiscal 2013-2014 City of Stillwater operating budget. Did we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, just briefly, we've had a couple of public sessions on working on the budget, discussed it publicly, we've put it into a required format, we've published it in our local newspaper in advance, and as published, the general fund would have total resources, including transfers of $54,120,620, total expenditures and transfers out, $54,120,620, balanced budget, and that's the general fund budget. You have a copy of that, we've also made that available publicly of all of the sub-funds of the general fund under the city council, which include the debt service fund, CVB fund, tourism fund, rural fire fund, CDBG grant fund, park grants, community development rehab fund, stormwater management and transportation fee. Those are all funds under the city council, those all have been published, and we've entertained questions from the council at a couple of meetings, and so it's, you can hear comments in the public.
In the public, and then we'll follow up with any questions we have for staff. We will open up our public hearing, and we do have several requests to speak. The first one is from Andre Wahara.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city councilors. My name is Andre Wahara, I'm the president of the Stillwater Tennis Association. I'm here representing the broader Stillwater tennis community, numbering in the hundreds. We would like to take this opportunity to thank the city staff for including funds in the coming 2014 city budget to perform short-term repairs to the city's tennis courts. We're grateful that the eight tennis courts in town are finally receiving much-needed attention after more than a decade of neglect. I'm also here to point out that these are temporary repairs that only patch over the underlying structural problems that exist. We expect cracks will begin to reappear in a short period of time, and we'll be facing the same set of problems we're facing now in just a matter of years. These courts have permanent foundation and subsurface damage that can only be corrected through complete reconstruction, so these repairs do not address the long-term needs of the community. Based on a benchmark of cities around the region, a city of our size typically offers anywhere from 16 to 20 well-maintained tennis courts, and we obviously fall well short of this target. The true long-term solution will be to build new courts to address both the shortage of courts in town as well as the quality of courts. The Stillwater Tennis Association recommends construction of eight to 12 new municipal courts located in the athletic complex north of the high school football stadium in cooperation with the Stillwater Public Schools at an estimated cost of less than $1 million, excluding site prep work. These new courts would address the shortage of courts in town and fill the urgent need for better facilities for the high school and junior high athletic programs as well as the tennis-playing community at large. A lack of quality courts in one location prevents us from running both regional high school and USTA sanctioned tennis tournaments that would bring business into town and limits the type of events that can be offered by the tennis community. We have collected over 600 signatures in support of this project, including 500 tennis-affiliated Stillwater residents, the OSU athletic director, both OSU men's and women's tennis coaches, both Stillwater High School boys and girls tennis coaches, most tennis association members, many parents, and residents that would like to see more quality-of-life investments in areas that have been overlooked over the years. With the city's economy and financial resources hitting new highs, we hope that the city council consider this capital project in its future budget deliberations to enhance the quality of life in Stillwater and reinforce the city's reputation as a progressive and forward-thinking place to live. Thank you for your time.
Our next request is from Jeff Hadwiger.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Jeff Hadwiger, I'm a resident of Stillwater and a board member of the Stillwater Tennis Association. My three children have grown up here in Stillwater, and they've all cycled through the junior high and high school tennis programs here, and they're now out of school, but during that time I had the opportunity to travel and watch them play at other cities, and so I've become very aware of the condition of our courts compared to those in other cities. Andre referred to the structural issues that we have with our courts, but in terms of that, in addition to that, the number of courts and the location is also a problem for our Stillwater youth. Scheduling tennis tournaments and practices for boys and girls at the junior high and high school level is difficult with just the eight courts, especially when since they're divided into two locations, and we are likely to face additional challenges in the future as the SDA tries to promote tennis for our younger players. Coaches and parents and even students often have to be shuttled between these two locations during tournaments because neither site has sufficient number of courts to run a tournament. This is not the case for other 6A school systems. So, members of the SDA, including myself and my children, have been volunteering our time to promote youth tennis here in Stillwater and also in surrounding communities, and we hope that the city and the school system can work together to keep our children involved with tennis facilities or playing tennis here in our facilities here in Stillwater, and this is a sport that they can enjoy as kids but also throughout the rest of their lives. Appreciate your time.
Next request is from Pat Janes.
My name is Pat Janes, I live at 104 East Eskridge Avenue here in Stillwater, and my question has to do with the formal business of this public hearing. Will it be a less formal public hearing like we had a few years ago where the budget was put up so everybody could see it on the overhead, and I believe that you were there, and I believe that Joe Weaver was there and withstood all the questions that came up and managed to live through that with a less formal kind of public hearing? Is that in the offering, or will this be the only public hearing that has to do with the budget?
I think this is the only, this is the official public hearing.
Well, okay, unofficial.
That was about during the time when we were discussing the library.
That's true.
And the cuts that we were making or that were being proposed, we had several or at least a couple of town halls, just...
I realize you've put it in the paper a couple times, and we have this particular situation tonight, but there are a lot of people, I think, that feel that that is very formal, and that they wouldn't come here and talk or ask questions about the budget, and the budget isn't for everybody to understand, so, I mean, could you come and make it more understandable to more people, to the public, is my question, I guess. Do I, I need to give you time to think about that, don't I?
We did have one of our meetings earlier this year, I think it was the second session on the budget, it wasn't in a town hall setting, it was at this meeting, but we did have the presentation of the budget by each department and presented on slides of the same type of presentation we had before, and of course we had time for comments, but no, it wasn't a town hall meeting.
Okay, would you think about it and let me know if this might be happening? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And our last request is from Randy Eldavick.
Good evening, my name is Randy Eldavick, I live in Stillwater at 516 South Walnut, and let me just second what Pat Janes said, I also am in favor of informal town hall meetings about the Stillwater budget, and my other reason for being here right now is that I'm bringing some ideas to Stillwater that I just heard at a meeting in Tulsa last week. It was a meeting that I went to that was sponsored by the John Hope Franklin Center for Reconciliation in Tulsa, and it was all about civic affairs. Kathy Taylor, whom some of you may be familiar with, she's the former mayor of Tulsa, she was there, she's just back from a year-long fellowship at Harvard University at the Kennedy School of Government in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and so she learned a lot there and is bringing ideas back with her, also running for mayor again. Along with Kathy Taylor, there was David Blatt, Director of the Oklahoma Policy Institute, some of you are probably familiar with him. Here are some of the things that Kathy Taylor and David Blatt were talking about. They were talking about public transportation, in other words, city buses, as a way of combating poverty, and this is something that applies not only to Tulsa but also to Stillwater, and I'm bringing it up at the city council meeting because it's not the first time I've made this point, but I have to make the point again. The university buses that are intended for the university community principally, for students and faculty members, are not adequate, and I believe the city of Stillwater needs to step up and add some of its own bus routes to other parts of town that are not covered by the university bus system. In order to climb out of poverty, people need bus transportation to job interviews, to workplaces, to colleges, and vocational technical schools. You all know that the low-income housing project, Southern Heights, is at the very far south end of Stillwater, and it's two miles from the nearest university bus stop. I would like the councilors to begin thinking about, and someday I hope, answer this question. My question is, why is the city of Stillwater willing to pay for road improvements that benefit owners of private automobiles who drive around and wear out the pavement, but the city of Stillwater is not willing to put money into an actual city as opposed to university, but an actual city public transit system?
Those are all the requests that we had, so I'm going to pass this down. Close the public hearing. Brings us back to staff and recommendations and...
Any further questions by the council, we'd be glad to respond to those. We do have under resolutions, we have a resolution to adopt the budget, we're recommending that that resolution be through by council.
I do think it was an interesting question on the less formal, that was an interesting question. After you put it back in time context for me, I do remember that, and those were, I remember those were specifically called with those very specific questions at hand. Phase the third. I guess before I dominate a conversation. Thoughts?
I agree, we have to have the budget approved in June.
Yeah, we've got 12 days.
12 days.
June 15.
Do we have time to hold a town hall meeting? Can we...
If the council wanted to, we could squeeze one in, I'd have to look at the calendar. We could pick a time to do that, it's going to be, if we do that, the problem, we could probably get it done, but we'd have to hold the meeting pretty quickly because if there's any changes, we'd have to renotice and have a new five-day notice prior to the 15th, so by June 10th we'd have to publish in the paper a new notice for adoption of the budget. I believe that's the law on that, Mr. ...
Right. You have to republish.
So if we could, we could have a public meeting later this week, have it republished on the 10th and have another special meeting on the 15th, well, the 15th is Friday.
Actually, it's Saturday, isn't it?
15th is Saturday.
Seventeenth, Sunday. Monday. I appreciate the question and on that, the less formal, I don't feel, there's a difference between just meeting the legal standard and the doing what you should, and while I believe we, I mean, we've talked budget at so many meetings, both formal meetings and study sessions, that I think we've met the, I hate to use the word moral, because that's putting it in context into it's not needed, but it's one of those...
If we don't do it this year, maybe we can make sure that we do something next year. I haven't had any emails asking me about anything.
That's another one of my thoughts is, you know, I've received no phone calls, I've received no emails, I haven't been stopped at the grocery store to be asked questions or be given concepts or be given ideas of changes, and so I don't know, a rush together, thrown together, how do you get notice out to people and let people know we're having a meeting? I don't know how effective that's going to be to try and have a meeting in two days when people have had six weeks of our conversation and no one has contacted me about anything.
I do think it's a good suggestion, Pat, that we do incorporate that in the future and that we're mindful of that.
We've had, you know, and there's been no set policy, and we were glad to do it every year. We, those town hall sessions of budget have been referred to, we've had one last year, and we had one about three years ago, about every other year we have, it's a very educational process where we discuss the impact of transfers and the intricacies of the budget and try to break it down into everyday language, so it becomes kind of an hour or two-hour tutorial in city government. We haven't done that every year, and then that leads way to a very informal discussion because then you can ask the questions and answer them about those kinds of things more intelligently. But we could do that every year, I don't have an objection to that.
John, just another thought is, I was thinking the same way the city manager is, I think we've done appropriate due diligence on the budget and the public hearings as far as approval of the budget per se and meeting our deadlines, but even if the budget were approved, there's nothing to stop us from having such an informational setting and inviting people and not, you know, we can schedule it when it works and, you know, do it on a Thursday evening or something, or a Tuesday evening, and let people come ask questions, not so much for the purpose of input for specific line items, but just to understand the budget.
Well, to understand, and, I mean, for the, even on the line items, we can amend a budget. I mean, if there's something that comes out that, I mean, a budget can be amended, it needs to be, I mean, it's not willy-nilly, but it can be done.
Yeah. So even though we have time constraints, I don't see any reason why we couldn't proceed on with how we're moving with the resolution that's on our agenda, but I, you know, I think it's a fair request, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't meet it, just for informational purposes only. And like you said, if there is something that is presented to us that would suggest we need to make an amendment, we can make that later in the summer, after the year begins.
I'd be glad to do that, you know, staff really enjoys that, I mean, I think it's really good that people have a chance to understand exactly how it works, we'd like to do that, so anytime, be glad to do that.
We're happy to hear that you want to hear about it.
So if the council does decide to go ahead and adopt the budget or the resolution seating, we'll still plan to have a town hall budget session this summer, probably at the library, invite people to come, go through the budget in any level of detail the public wants to hear, answer questions, and get it opened up.
We can target that in the middle part of July, is that...
Probably. Mid-July.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions of staff on this public hearing on the budget?
Not at this time, Mayor.
I'm just sad we didn't see a bubble chart again this year.
I will second the lack of bubble chart sadness.
The bubble chart will come out with the adoption of the budget.
Oh, good.
And that'll be, that's going to be the educational piece that goes out and shows the budget.
There you go.
You'll have the circle chart will be available.
That would be helpful.
It's a usual visual, it really is, so, okay. That takes us to our second public hearing, but we've got a staff memo to postpone this until June 17th, so do we need a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Would someone make a motion to postpone this public hearing to June 17?
I would move to postpone. Second.
Motion.
Hearing now for 498 South Martinburg. Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone to June 17. And that passes five to zero. Okay, that takes us down to resolution, and the first resolution is CC 2013-7, commitment of leverage for the CDBG. Ms. Silver's, is it you?
Valerie?
Good evening, I'm Valerie Silver's, grants coordinator for the City of Stillwater. We adopted the proposal of the project, of the two drainage projects that will be the project for 2013. At this time, all we're doing is trying to just do a resolution to, for the match funds, and that will be out of the stormwater cash reserve.
Any questions on this resolution?
Move approve.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution 2013-7. And that passes five to zero. Next resolution, CC 2013-8, resolution, Stillwater City Council adopting an operational budget for fiscal year 2013 to 2014.
Staff would recommend approval of that resolution.
I salute. Got a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion on this resolution?
The only thing that, by my, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I would throw my two cents into the hat, I would, I don't know if it's going to be a matter of policy or procedure, but I agree with their statements, even as a counselor, it can be a lot to take in, even setting up here two years, it's a lot to take in, I don't have a lot of formal training in that background. So I would say, for what it's worth, I would almost make the bubble chart before the budget goes out and make it a policy, now, maybe I'm confused, we met at the community center, that's what I thought that meeting was, was that informal setting. Now, I don't know, you know, we have a, we have a social media now on Facebook that, you know, I read almost every day, I would say, use Facebook, use social media, YouTube, all those things, and push that information on the budget. I think our social media outlets are very good, and I think if we, if we develop processes or if we find a good way to disseminate that information through social media, the newspaper, I'm just going to say it, it doesn't really do it for me. If it doesn't do it for me, there's got to be some more citizens that's not doing it for either. Social media, I'm on it every day, I'm plugged into it, it's just part of the culture. So if we use the social media to... So if we use the social media to push the budget, to push that information, to push, to push that meeting so that people know it's there, I would say it's a, I don't know, a culture change, a policy change. I don't know what it, I don't know what you'd call it, I don't know what you'd term it. But I agree. I think, I think we should take more effort to get that information out there, to get that feedback. I will say at the same time, the only comments that I have got about the budget, I won't say who it is, someone in this room, but I won't say who it is. And he says to me, "The only reason I'm not screaming at you is because you guys are doing a good job." I thought, fair enough, because he was all over me the first two years I was on council. And that wasn't the case this year. So maybe there's a little praise there, but I agree with their, I agree with their thoughts. I think we should make more effort to get the information out there in a little more informal, in a little more informal way. And that's really the only thing I've got on them. And I regret that they didn't get to go to that meeting, but I do think we've, we've done what we could to try to get it out there. I think we can definitely improve on it.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on this resolution?
Not at this time, Mayor.
All right. Well, let's move. Resolutions adopted five to zero. Our last resolution of the evening, City Council, is CC 2013-9, resolution authorizing participation, Oklahoma Department of Transportation.
Dr. Peak, would you like to give them a briefing on this, please?
Jason Peak, Transportation Department Manager. I was contacted by ODOT in early May. The Lakeview Road project that was done several years ago to widen from Western to Washington Street had federal funds involved. It was joint project. ODOT completed an audit this year. There's about $52,000 of those federal funds remaining dedicated towards that project. So they asked us if we could come up with a project to utilize those funds. We're recommending that we use those funds to refresh the pavement markings out there and also evaluate adding bike lanes to the section from Western to Husband Street, similar to what we did on Hall of Fame or 12th Avenue. And that's basically, the resolution would allow us to enter into a project agreement for this project.
Any questions of Dr. Peak? Is there a motion on this resolution?
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second to adopt resolution 2013-9. And that passes five to zero. Takes us down to ordinance, First Street on ordinance 3231, Mr. Dorman.
The ordinance residing a tract of land located at 1,000 East Virginia Avenue from RSS, Smallot Single Family Residential District to RT Residential Two-Family District.
Is there a motion on First Street and ordinance 3231?
I would move. Second.
Motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Mr. Dorman, any items from you?
Request for three executive sessions pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1 of the Open Meeting Act for the Purpose of Confidential Communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipling, or resignation of City Manager Dan Galloway, City Attorney John Dorman, and Municipal Judge Tommy Rodd.
Galloway.
No further items this evening.
Okay, counselors?
I would only add one comment. I don't know, I don't know a financing mechanism, but city public transit, that, that was, that sparked my interest. I don't know how, I don't know if it's even possible in our, you know, with our size of a community. And I think OSU does a good job. But I will admit, I had an employee this, this last fall that, we got him in the electrical program at Meridian, and I just assumed that the buses went there. Come to find out, they didn't. So I didn't, I see where you're coming from. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I don't know how practical it is, you know, for a lot of reasons, but I think it's a good idea and I appreciate your, your input. You on that? That's all I got, boss.
Other items? We've got a couple. Just reminder to the counselors, the Employee Appreciation Cookout is this Thursday at the Armory on Ninth from 11:30 to 1:30, June 6th. Reminder to you guys. And then Vice Mayor Hopkins will be on KSPI tomorrow morning, 8:15, with Bill Van Ness.
Will be.
Okay.
Exciting radio.
It is exciting radio. Okay, and that's going to take us down to appointments. Let me open that up. Do have one appointment for Library Trust Board. I would nominate Terry Miller, reappoint for another term.
Second.
Or a second.
Got a second nomination? Okay, we've got a nomination and a second. And that passes five to zero. We're going to recess City Council and then call to order the Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting. And the first item on the Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting is Consent Docket with items A, B, and C. Somebody wish to remove items A, B, or C?
Would move approval of Consent Docket.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve Consent Docket. And that passes five to zero. That'll take us down to resolutions. The first resolution, Resolution 2013-2, adopting the Stillwater Utility Authority budget for fiscal year 2013 to 14.
And just as, as a reminder, just for the record, the Stillwater Utilities Authority have total projected resources for the coming year, including the beginning balance of $97,367,589 and proposed budget expenditures of $72,768,223, with a balance of $24,599,366. The fund balance being comprised of capital improvement funds for water and sewer and electric and emergency reserve funds.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt Resolution, SUA 2013-2. And that passes five to zero. And that takes us to our second resolution, Resolution 2013, adopting rate structure for City of Stillwater Water and Wastewater.
Mr. Blankenship, would you like to present it, please?
Yes, sir. Dan Blankenship, SUA Director. The proposed resolution, pending resolution in front of you this evening is a continuation of the implementation of the rates that were recommended as part of the cost of service study. It was completed at the end of 2008 and approved by the, or accepted by the trustees in January of 2009. As we have done in, in the past, we are proposing, recommending that the rate increase be done in two steps. One, one step on the first of July and then the second step to implement the recommended rate on the first of January of 2014. The, based on the discussion we had when the, we had the Waste Management Rate Resolution recently, we listed on there the annual increase, which we have been doing since 2007, listed that as an optional part of the resolution. So if the trustees so desire to include or not to include that in this resolution, it's listed as optional.
Questions?
Do you have a question?
You got lots of them. Ask them why.
Yeah, I got lots of them, but...
Would you read the optional statement, please?
Yes. The optional statement is, be it further resolved that is, be it further resolved that it is anticipated that the retail water and wastewater rates and tariffs will need to be increased on an annual basis in order to properly operate and maintain the water and wastewater systems. However, in the absence of any action by the trust, inaction by the, any action by the trustees to increase retail water and wastewater rates and tariffs effective July 1, 2014, and on July 1 of each year thereafter, fees, rates, and tariffs charged to the customers for water and wastewater services shall be adjusted to reflect an increase of up to 3% or the percentage change in the South Urban Region Consumer Price Index during the immediate past calendar year, as determined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, whichever is less. If the percent change in the South Urban Region Consumer Price Index is a negative number, then there would be no adjustment to the fees, rates, and tariffs. And that is the exact language that we've been using since 2007.
I'd make a motion to approve the alternative language. Resolution with that language.
With that language? Yes.
Now, we'll second that.
Does that mean the fees don't go up?
Fees do go up.
Fees do go up.
I had not heard it yet. Yeah, they didn't, I had not heard it yet. With that language. Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, sir.
If I may, Chairman? What's the, what's the rate increase? What's the number? What's the, the static number? What's the rate increase percentile?
The, the rate increase as recommended by the cost of service study, it's currently, the water is $6 per thousand. That's the volumetric rate. January, or July 1, it would go to 625 and then to 650 on January 1. So a combined increase of 50 cents over the fiscal year in 50 cents on, on $6. And then on the, on the wastewater, the sewer charge, that's currently $2.75 and it would go to $3.
That's wholly different from the optional language.
Right, that's wholly different. The optional language would, would, that would kick in on July 1 of next year. And if there, if we don't do any, if we don't come back for the cost of service increase, then the automatic increase would, would kick in at that time.
Yep. And the wording of the, of the alternate language is important. It's 3% or the CPI for the region, whichever is less. If there were zero inflation that happened during the year, there would be zero adjustment on the bill. So the bills only go up if the cost of doing business goes up. It's capped at 3. Even if there's 5% inflation, it still only goes up 3. So it's, it's got some protection in it.
They want to go higher than 3, they got to bring it back to us. And if the index is lower, it goes up at that higher amount, even if it's 0. I mean, the lower amount, I'm sorry.
The lower amount, yeah. If it's, it's the ma, the max, it's capped at 3%. So if the index is 3.5%, then, then the adjustment would be 3%. If the index is 2.5%, then the adjustment is 2.5%.
This increase is, how much of it is going into the capital improvement fund?
100% of the increase goes into, is set aside into the water capital and sewer capital improvement funds for capital improvements on those systems.
And that's the fund we're using to pay for the improvements that we've been voting on for the last couple of years?
Yeah, every, every time we bring a capital project to you, and more in particular, the improvements we're, we're working on, on the call pipeline, the Southwest Water improvements, all of those water improvements, and then miscellaneous sewer improvements, that is the fund that we are using to pay for those improvements. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Not at this time, sir. I'm ready to vote.
You've already voted.
Do I need to?
Unless you, unless you closed the vote. I mean, you've already had three affirmative votes, so the motion passed.
Fair enough.
Trustee Scott didn't vote.
I actually did not vote.
Then you have to show him as an abstention. I don't know how to reopen it short of a motion to reconsider.
One of my favorite things.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I didn't see it light up that quick either.
It was not my intention to...
Reconsider. We do have a motion to reconsider.
I would second.
We have a second. Vote on a motion to reconsider.
I have to second it. Has to be somebody...
Oh, that's right, that's right. So we have a motion and a second to reconsider.
I apologize.
And so this vote is just on, will we vote again?
Yes.
It was not my intention to mess up the process. I was just...
Okay. Okay, that passes five to zero. So it rolls us back in time to the question on Resolution, whatever number that was, nine, or three, excuse me, three, 2013-3.
Motion to approve with the language that Mr. Blankenship read.
And I'll second.
Same motion, same second, I believe. Okay, we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay. And that passes three to two. With Counselor Scott and Counsel, Councilman Noble voting against the resolution. Okay, no other items on that. Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And that passes five to zero. SUA is adjourned. Public Works and CETA.
So on the public work.
Okay, we will call to order the Stillwater Public Works Authority meeting. And on the, we have approval of minutes from June 4, 2012. Is there a motion on these minutes?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Passes five to zero and it takes us down to Resolution SPWA 13-1, adopt Stillwater Public Works Authority budget for 13 to 14.
The Stillwater Public Works Authority is, has 109,000, 102,900, excuse me, $109,908. The only projected revenue is $500 in interest. No projected expenditures with a projected balance of $110,318. As a footnote, I would recommend approval of this, but as a footnote, we have talked in the past, this has been an inactive trust fund for quite some time. It was originally created solely as a financing tool. We now have the SUA and CETA that are trust authorities that have the same authority. So I would suggest later in the year, we look at possibly revolving this trust and transferring its assets to the city if it's been inactive for some number of years. But since it still exists and we have a fund balance there, that we recommend that that be approved for this year.
Any questions on this resolution?
Not at this time.
Is there a motion on SPWA Resolution 13-1?
I move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. And that passes five to zero. And is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Public Works Authority?
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Reivers, second by Counselman Noble. And also passes five to zero. SPWA is adjourned. We will call to order Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. And the only item on there is Resolution CETA 13-1, adopt the Stillwater Economic Development Authority budget for 2013 to 14.
Stillwater Economic Development Authority has total resources, including its beginning balance and projected revenues of $897,887, proposing expenditures of $309,700. balance and projected revenues of $897,887, proposing expenditures of $309,708, with reserve balance of $588,000. Recommend approval of the resolution.
And I salute.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve SEDA Resolution 13-1. And that also passes five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Economic Development Authority?
So moved.
And SEDA is adjourned. We will reconvene the City Council Meeting. And is there a motion to move into executive session for the items listed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, move to executive session. And that passes five to zero.